I call on order of this regular scheduled Craven County Board of Commissioners meeting, Monday, November 4th, 2019. I welcome each and every one of you. We have a special group of people in the audience tonight who just finished up the First Citizens Academy, and we'll be recognizing them later. But I welcome each and every one of you here, what's going on in your county and how we're processing going forward. Call, call the order, roll call. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner McKay?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell? Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Here.
Chairman Lyner?
Here. And before we stand for the pledge, remind everyone to silence or turn off their phones or any electronic devices they may have, please. Okay, if you please stand for the pledge and remain standing for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the land, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we enter into Your presence this day with thanksgiving in our hearts for the gracious gift of life and the opportunities that You have set before us. We bless You for being our Creator and for providing a living relationship of love through Your Son and our Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ. We humble ourselves before You as men and women of the special body whom You have appointed with responsibility of serving the people of this county. May You fill the minds of each leader with wisdom which is from above, fill each heart with passion for Your glory and the greatest good of others, and fill each decision with the guidance of Your Spirit. Our hearts are grateful to voice this incessant prayer on this day in our nation's history with fellow citizens. May You unite our hearts to glorify Your name. May You bless the cities and communities of our nation and county with peace. May You bless the United States of America, for we humbly make this prayer in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Okay, before we approve the agenda, I'd like to have a motion. Board, we need to go into closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143-318A3. There be no action after coming out of it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's added as number 11. At this time, receive a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call Chairman's privilege. We're going to recognize our citizens who have volunteered to go through our First Citizens Academy and make them aware of what this board does, what the departments do within the county. They've gone through a four-week session every Tuesday for the past month. It's supposed to have been four hours, some of it went to five and a half hours, and believe it or not, they all stayed. So, we appreciate that on that. So at this time, I'd like to invite all of the Commissioners to come down in front.
All right, let a participant come, and I'm going to have the Chairman present you with your certificate. First will be Susan Long. Mr. Chairman, we also have participant James Heath, who is unable to be here tonight, but we'll make sure he gets his certificate.
From behalf of the Board, and myself, and the staff, we cannot thank you enough for stepping up, making this the first one. Hopefully, we'll do it annually. 14, 16 is about all we can handle. We've got more 101 and everything else, but you've got firsthand experience on what this board is dealing with, the departments, you've been through all of the departments and everything else. You see what's going on in your county. It's real easy to sit out there, but some of you sat up here last week and did it. You see, you see the difference of what's going on. So, we cannot thank you enough. Now, I understand some of them want to speak.
Yes, sir.
You got the list?
I do. I'll give you a second to get you back where you are. Mr. Chairman, as you're taking your seats, I'll just tell you, I was really pleased with this class. They were enthused every night we met. They were excited about learning about county government, they were excited about visiting facilities, and I hope they walked away with better understanding of county government. But I thought, and we thought, it'd be good for them to put it in their own words. So I'm going to leave the podium, go back to my seat, and I think there's a few that want to speak.
All right, we had five that wanted to speak. Please go to the podium. Give us your name and your address.
Susan Long, 1990, Acorn Drive, New Bern. I would like to thank you for this extraordinary opportunity to participate in Craven Connection. It has opened my eyes to the immense challenges that each agency faces and now how they rise to these challenges and find ways to make the lives of the citizens of Craven County better. Whether you know it or not, you have created a phenomenal educational opportunity for the students of Craven County. This class is what an educator would call an authentic experience, and as such, it would be a fantastic course of study for a high school civics class or a course of credit from Craven Community College. It has the possibilities of giving insight into job opportunities and what skills and training are needed to be successful in each area. Thank you to Gwen, to Jack, I was going to say George, but I'll say Commissioner Lyner for this opportunity. I was so honored to be a part of this group. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Roger Pate, 102 Neuse Harbor Boulevard. So I want to say, I've lived in 12 counties in North Carolina, from the mountains to the coast, and I'm extremely proud to live in Craven County. And I have my two sons back here, born both in Craven County as well. So, I can't tell you how wonderful it's been to be here in not only the good times, but through the storm that we've all experienced here in recent time, and to see how we all pull together. It's not an easy task. I work with a large corporation with over 100,000 people globally, and I know that that's challenging, but we have our own set of challenges in Craven County. And from the Board of Commissioners, through to Jack and all the department heads and all of the employees throughout the county, we pull together and we are Craven Strong. And I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this class and really be able to meet and see and hear what we do on behalf of the citizens of Craven County. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Greetings, County Commissioners, Chairman Lyner.
Have you got your name and your address?
I'm so sorry. Dorothea White, 1811 Durham Street, New Bern. All Commissioners, support staff, citizens of New Bern and Craven County, it has been my pleasure and honor to have been selected for the inaugural class of Craven Connections. We have been fortunate to have received an opportunity to become familiar with county government. As the wife of former Alderman, the Honorable Bernard White, I am well aware of the effort, the time, and dedicated commitment that is necessary to serve in a municipal government. As County Commissioners, Booker remembers and is well acquainted, as well as Commissioner Mitchell in her absence, I was able to learn some of the inner workings of our local government, county government, as a cohort of city government. I am honored to have met and/or interviewed lifers like Tom Glasgow, Ron Antry, Dennis Holton, Sherry Richard, Stanley Kite, Gwen Bryant, and Don Baumgartner. Brilliant multitaskers like Gwen Bryant, Amber Parker, Tasha McCoy, Gina Hodges, Jeff Futrell, and Doctors Doyle and Stotts. I am a 1985 graduate of Craven Community College in business computer programming, where Dennis Holton was one of my instructors. I served on the 2,000 Committee of 100. I've served as a member and board chair of Craven County Democratic, excuse me, Craven County Department of Social Services. And, yes, I was chair of Craven Democratic Party and a former candidate for the North Carolina Senate, and finally, a 30-year-plus Carolina East employee. In conclusion, thank you Gwen Bryant for your dedication and foresight for the necessity of Craven Connection and your desire to serve Craven County citizens. Thank you Jack V for your leadership, cosponsorship, and taking Craven County to a higher level of service to your citizenry. Your simulation of county government was impeccable. It is my hope that you will continue this expose of county government in the future classes. This was a most rewarding and memorable experience. Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much. Okay. I know we had two more to sign up. If you still want to speak, it's your opportunity.
Donald Latham, 2605 Alabama Avenue, New Bern, North Carolina. First, I would like to thank all the Commissioners for giving me the opportunity to be on the Craven Connection. Second, I would like to thank Gwen and the county management staff. And I have learned so much since I've been up there about county government. I did 26 years in the Marine Corps. And just by sitting up there Tuesday night, the Marine Corps gives you a budget, and that's your budget. It's, you don't have to worry about police cars and all of that. I have managed million dollars worth of equipment. But by being up there Tuesday, the Commissioners, y'all have a really hard job. It's easy for us to sit out here in the audience and just see that, say, well, that's easy to make that decision. Until you sit in the hot seat up there, then you can't say it's easy. I would like to thank Gwen for just putting up with us. I would like to thank my dad. I want to follow in his footsteps because he's a good Commissioner. Well, matter of fact, I want to thank all the Commissioners. And I want to thank Chairman Lyner because we're brothers. He's a Marine and I'm one. Thank you.
Donald, thanks, sir. All right, we had one more. I won't embarrass you. If you want to come up, fine.
Well, they made it easy for me. They said everything I needed to say. But anyway, my name is Elijah Brown. I was getting tired. See, I could say that because I sit in that seat. 916 Fort Titan Drive. First of all, my Honorable, my family, this is my daughter and my two granddaughters there. And I told you a story at the end. My granddaughter is sitting right there, that's a miracle, through some of the services that you offer. But anyway, I'm so pleased and honored to be selected and be a part of this, and I don't want it to end. It could get better, and by being a part of it, I learned so much. I worked 20 years through the school system as an employee. My daughter also, she's a new employee about a year or two with the school system. But if anybody, like Donald said and others, if you have any negative that you want to say how they conduct their business up there, you join the class and you sit up there and let them grill you the way we was grilled. You have a found appreciation for what they do. And I told them earlier, by going to the different facilities, sitting down with the heads, what I do in the community, that made it much easier for me to go back and tell them those things that would help. And the biggest thing is, when you see them deal with a budget and you see the hard effort that the different heads do to save money, to find money outside of the budget to make this county better, you have a better understanding, a better appreciation of it. That's my say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I think that's all. If there's anybody else on this class, okay, we're moving on. Again, this board and myself and the staff cannot thank each and every one of you for stepping up, stepping forward, staying with us. You've got a better insight than most citizens do out there of what this county does and how many departments that we have. We will keep this going based on what I'm hearing right now, and I think this board will keep it going, doing at least one a year on that. But again, thank each and every one of you. All right, board, let's move into it. All right, next on the agenda, petitions of citizen agenda topics.
Mr. Chairman, we do not have anybody for the first part of this Citizens.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll go out of petitions. Next on the agenda, consent agenda, minutes of October 21, 2019, regular session, tax releases and refunds.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any comments? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyner?
Yes. Okay, moving into departmental matters, planning subdivision for approval, Don Baumgartner, Planning Director.
Thank you. We have for your consideration tonight the John and Jeanette Daltrey subdivision. The property is owned by John and Jeanette Daltrey. It's surveyed by Terry Wheeler. It's located in Township Number Two off Saints Delight Church Road. It contains four lots on approximately 7.81 acres, and each of the lots are to be served by First Craven Sanitary District water and individual septic systems. The planning board has recommended this subdivision for final approval.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend approval, but I would just like to ask you one, make one correction.
Okay.
It's First Craven Water, but on the map, it says Craven Water.
Okay. It says First Craven, yeah, sanitary district, right. And it's just called First Water. First sanitary district, First Water sanitary district?
Well, on the map, it just says county water.
Oh.
It's not county water, it's first.
Okay, on the actual subdivision map. Okay, all right, no problem. We'll see if we can get the surveyor to correct that then.
We'd recommend it. Go ahead with this.
Got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Donald, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Human Resources requests to set register deeds starting salary, Amber Parker.
Good evening, Chairman, Board. North Carolina General Statutes allows the Craven County Board of Commissioners to adjust salaries, allowances, and compensation for the sheriff and the register of deeds positions. The Board of Commissioners must give notice of the intention for adjustment no later than 14 days before the last day of filing notice for candidacy for the office. Elections for the register of deeds is going to be during our 2020 election, and the last day for filing for the 2020 election for the registered deeds is going to be December 20th. Following the election and after the successful candidate takes office, the Commissioners retain the right to adjust the minimum salary upward in accordance with years of related experience held by the successful candidate. The proposed starting salary for the registered deeds position is $46,800, and I've attached a draft resolution for your consideration.
Receive a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Okay, before we go in, call for a vote. Make sure everybody understands, this is a elected physician coming up for election next year.
Correct.
This is just in case we receive a new one or somebody gets involved. We set the policy as far as salary starting.
Right, this is a starting salary that they basically have to pay a percentage of the starting salary for their filing fee, and this sets that minimum salary.
Hearing no discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Okay, next on the agenda, finance budget amendments. Greg Warren, Finance Director, new finance position request in Fire Service District.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have two items on the agenda for you tonight. The first one is a new finance position request. Due to the growth of the county and the various projects currently underway, the volume of financial transactions and the resulting workload has increased tremendously for the Finance Department staff. Since 2009, the county's budget has grown by 19% from 94.4 million in 2009 to 112.2 million in the current fiscal year. Although efforts have been made to address this growth with the additions of a purchasing agent in 2013, and most recently, a budget analyst with the current fiscal year's budget, the number of finance accounting technicians staff processing these transactions has remained the same. In addition to the increases in volume over this time period, the county also recently implemented its new financial software in April of last fiscal year. While the new software has improved the county's reporting capabilities, the game has required additional data to now be collected and processed by finance staff. Overall, the combinations of these factors have greatly impacted the workloads of current staff and have routinely caused a need for additional hours to be worked in the evenings and on weekends to keep current. The county management team was presented with an action plan that includes adding a new position for a full-time accounting technician three within the Finance Department. This plan will provide for the capacity to absorb the increased workloads while maintaining the county's accounting records at a high level. The proposed new position is a grade 63, step one, with an annual salary of $38,571. The cost to fund this new position for the remainder of the fiscal year is $34,451, which covers both salary and benefits for the 16 pay periods that are remaining in the fiscal year. It is staff recommendation that it's time to the board consider approving the proposed new position. Attached in your budgets or in your agendas is a budget amendment that would take this $34,451 from fund balance and to fund the position for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Got a motion? Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, Craig, have we looked at other counties similar size and, you know, the number of employees that we have in our Finance Department versus others? Are we somewhere close?
I would say we're kind of in the middle. I mean, you have some that are, it's hard to equate that across the board equally because maybe some have airports and some don't, you know, various things. But I'd say we're in line with others. We're not too far below any of them, but we're also definitely not on the high end as well. So right in the middle.
Manager, I've got one question. If we approve, this gets approved tonight, when could this individual start? I know you're asking for 16 pay periods, but that's...
Yes, sir. We would have to advertise a position, just like any new position. Craig would have to go through an interview process and usually probably a wind-down time if he's an outside candidate. You know, Craig, I don't know your timeline, I'm saying a month, month and a half, probably.
Yeah, I think 30 days.
So actually, this is...
There could be an internal candidate, I mean, obviously, we'll get after it.
Now, we have a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Craig, before you go forward...
Yes, sir.
Class, you heard this last week, so now you get to see what we do. This is one of your tests last week. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you. The second budget amendment in your packet tonight is for the Fire Service Districts.
This is one of your tests last week. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you. The second budget amendment in your packet tonight is for the fire service districts. At the August 5, 2019 meeting, Commissioners approved 50% matching grants for the four volunteer fire departments who were awarded equipment grants from the North Carolina Department of Insurance. Cove City, that was in that group, did not qualify for a matching grant. However, the Commissioners decided to approve funding some equipment purchases that were needed by that department. The total amount approved for all volunteer fire districts was 119,351, which included Little Swift Creek, Volunteer Fire Department, $28,705, Cove City Volunteer Fire Department at $22,608, Dover Volunteer Fire Department at $28,608, Fort Barnwell at $30,000, and Number Nine Township at $9,430. Although the matching grant was approved, at this time, there was a budget amendment needed to appropriate these funds. And we will not be dispersing until they provide proof that they've purchased these equipments with documentation.
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as I remember, you definitely told them that this is the last year that we're going to do this and that they got to get their act together.
That was for Cove City, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, that's right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Leiner?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, appointments. Pending, current, upcoming. Pending appointments, Adult Care Home Advisory Committee. We still have five vacancies. Craven County Clean Sweep has two. Nursing Home Advisory Committee has three. New Bern Planning and Zoning Board, one vacancy. That's for the ETJ, and the two Commissioners are working that issue. Do you have something?
No, sir, I was just going to say Commissioner Mark and Commissioner Booker and Commissioner Mitchell are working on that issue.
I went through that list, and I'm going to go through it again with Commissioner Booker to see if we can come up with somebody on there. We've got the phone numbers now, which was a big job.
Next is the senior letters, Lady Tarheel, alternate. And like I said at the last meeting, if anybody is interested, I think that's 60 and older, to serve on that board, and it's an altered position, if the person can't make it, that has everything to do with our seniors. So if you're interested in sitting on that board, please let someone know that it's important for this county. It gets the word out to our seniors, gets the state aware of what we're doing and what is needed down here. So it's an important position. Current appointments, Recreation Advisory Board, Bill Taylor, representing District Seven, is seeking reappointment to the Rec Council Advisory.
And I make that recommendation.
Okay, we have a recommendation. Any others? Hearing none, he's reappointed by acclamation. Farmers Relief Fund Board of Trustees, Donald Rotman, representing District Seven, is seeking reappointment. And I'll make that nomination. Any other nominations? Hearing none, by acclamation, he's reappointed. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Matthew Knight, representing District Four, is seeking reappointment to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that Mr. Knight be reappointed.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, by acclamation, he's reappointed. Regional Agent Advisory Board, Lavik Williams, representing District Two, is seeking reappointment to the Regional Agent Advisory Board.
Chairman, I would ask that Ms. Williams be reappointed.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, by acclamation, she's reappointed. Let me make sure I didn't mess up here. There's one here, this one's filed. Next is Vanceboro, Craven County Library Ward, one vacancy. Della Copeland, representing District One, has submitted the application shown on attachment 6B, seeking appointment to the Vanceboro Craven County Library Ward.
Mr. Chairman, I would appoint that individual. We had a person by the name of Gail Midget, who served on that board for five, six years. And due to health reasons, she had to resign. So I would appoint her.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, by acclamation, she is reappointed. Okay, upcoming appointments, term expired in December, is Craven County Health Board, Recreation Advisory Council, Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council, Nursing Home Advisory Committee. Okay. Next on the agenda, petitions of citizens. Comments directly pertaining to policies or issues which are under the statutory or administrative authority of the Board shall be made during a general comment period occurring at the end of each regular scheduled meeting. Comments during this period shall be limited to those comments directly pertaining to issues which are under the statutory or administrative authority of the Board. Each speaker must address the Board as a whole and not any individual Commissioner. County staff members of the audience from the lecturing show begin with his or her remarks, giving name and address and a topic about which they intend to speak. All right, we have three minutes for what we got.
We have 10 members that want to speak.
Okay, call the first one.
For our elder, Nubai.
Ms. Nubai, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. My name is Fergel Godet Nubai, from the Greater Providence of Havelock, North Carolina. To the Commissioners and all persons in attendance, I stand here today to address an issue of utmost importance, that of the accessibility to Harlow, Adams Creek Road. In case of inclement weather and especially a hurricane, here lies the problem. There are 2,000 constituents in this area that are at dire risk at Luther Taylor's Bridge or Curve. Hurricanes cause excessive flooding. No one can enter and no one can leave during this time. If an individual has or suffers a heart attack or a stroke, remember, no Pedro, no emergency vehicles can respond. There is no community in Craven County that has a problem like this and for this length of time. On a personal note, I was born and reared there. I implore you to give this situation as much precedence as possible. What if something devastating would happen? God forbid. We can't wait. If there is any earmarked money or any means of your helping this community, we would appreciate this very much, and we would thank you to the highest esteem. Remember a poet that said, "A need and love are never far apart." I thank you in advance for your time and your consideration. Share your wealth. Have a good evening.
Ms. Nubai, thank you, ma'am.
Ken Tominski? Good evening. My name is Ken Tominski, and I live at 117 Spinnaker Lane in Havelock, which is really in Township Five. I'm here tonight to talk about the insufficient level of EMS service being provided to Township Five. This is not a new issue. This is an issue that has existed for years. A committee was formed of local citizens of Township Five in June of 2018. Since being formed, this committee has been gathering information from various sources, including county staff. And we've been sharing that information out as we gathered it. For years, we have heard, to get better EMS service for us, our fire taxes would need to go up. We now know that not to be true. Because what we have found out is that the EMS services for the county are funded out of the general tax fund. So everybody pays for the EMS service, but not everyone, meaning Township Five gets the same level of service. Tonight, we've provided you with a handout. I'm not sure if you have it in front of you, but if you would turn to page three, you will see that the times for Township Five are significantly higher than anywhere in the county, better than double of most areas. We're talking about 18 to 19 plus minutes on average. Those people that live further out on Adams Creek Road or Ferry Road are even worse off. In August of 2018, Commissioners Leiner, McCabe, and Jones reported that they were assigned to a committee to look at the Havelock-Harlow fire departments in regards to responsiveness. They reported at that meeting that based on their findings, they asked the county manager to conduct a cost feasibility study for a volunteer EMS using the fire department in Harlow or a standalone, stand-up unit of first responders. We have been looking to get updates from that activity since the committee asked the county manager to start. We've made several requests about progress. The responses have been, there's a lot of details to work out. This is a complex situation, which we fully understand. It requires a lot of analysis. Meetings are scheduled. It's a slow process. An update in June said that there was money made available in the budget, but the money was put towards a study, from what we understand. We don't know for sure because we're not sure we're getting good information back on what's going on. The Commissioners owe the residents of Township Five an update and a solution before someone dies because of the poor EMS response time in Township Five.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to offer anybody, I'll leave them with the Commissioner. You'll see a lot of us wearing buttons here tonight about getting it done. I will leave it. Hopefully, some of you will take these and support our efforts. Dwayne Ursay?
Good evening. My name is Dwayne Ursay. I live at 111 Bimini Court in Havelock, Township Five. I'm also going to talk about the EMS problem we have in Township Five. But I want to talk a little bit about the demographics for Township Five. What we have is 3,606 people, spread over 55.5 miles. So that's 65 people per square mile, or about 18 houses per square mile. That's a lot of area for a very, very, very light occupancy. It kind of defines what rule is, doesn't it? Our median age in Township Five is 44.2 years, while we are 25% higher in age than the rest of Craven County. Township Five has 974 people over the age of 60, or 25% of our population. That is also 25% higher than Craven County's average. As you know, older citizens require more EMS services than any other age group. That is why we need our own EMS unit and not to rely on Township Six to provide this service. They're just too far away to increase our times. Now, the EMS is funded by tax dollars. Our dollars go to the Havelock Fire Department to provide EMS for us. Havelock EMS units are located too far away to provide acceptable or response time. We need an EMS unit centrally located in our own township, not going to Havelock. You know, today, as a side, I went from my house to the West End Fire Station in Havelock. 21 minutes. No traffic, 21 minutes. Can imagine what would happen if it was a shift beginning or change at Cherry Point, 170 and 101 are blocked up. God only knows how long it would take. So our response times are 19.65 minutes in Township Five. That's the average. That's double the county response time for the rest of Craven County, which is 9.31 minutes. Our residents are at greater risk when emergency medical services are needed. It's unacceptable, especially for those living off of Adams Creek or Temple Point Road, where response times are over 30 minutes. It's a matter, especially for those living off of, excuse me. It's a matter of life and death that we get our response time down to a manageable level. Myself and four neighbors all have had 911 calls. They've all taken over 30 minutes. Township Five residents are really not being treated equally as it relates to emergency medical services. Our residents are not taking, are not asking for more than the norm. All we're asking for is to be treated like the rest of the citizens.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, you're welcome.
Judy Tominski?
Good evening. Judy Tominski, 117 Spinnaker Lane, Havelock, but really it's North Harlow. I'm here to talk about the EMS in Township Five. There are many people that wanted to come tonight, but they could not. So I'm going to read two letters, I hope I have enough time, of people that want to have their voices heard. The first one comes from Mary Jo Gamble. And she says, "I'm sorry, I'm not able to attend the upcoming meeting, but I would like to add a personal situation to add to the comments that should be made. My husband, Bill, has developed a condition that at this moment, undiagnosed, but has shown a mass on his left lung and significant fluid buildup. We went to the pulmonologist, and during our discussion, I asked for advice on what I should do if his breathing becomes problematic, given it would take EMS about an hour to get to us. He was dumbfounded and asked, "Where do you live?" And I said, "I live in the forgotten end of Craven County." He said that I should drive him to the ER myself, which I did yesterday morning. It seems incredible to me that the very purpose of EMS is to respond to medical emergencies, and yet we are unable to enjoy the benefit when we need it the most. I would love to have asked the council members how they would feel if their family members required emergency services, and it was incumbent on them to prepare and drive their loved ones to the hospital as the only viable option. Please feel free to share this, and thank you so much for keeping the issue going." That was written by Mary Jo Gamble on Monday, October 28. This letter comes from Mike Singleton. He writes, "I will be unable to attend the Commissioners' meeting on November 4, but I would like to submit this letter of support for EMS services for Township Five. We have lived on Belanga Road for 19 years and witnessed extreme response for the EMS service. Case in point, a pedestrian was hit by a vehicle the night of June 2018 and had to be flown to Vidant Medical Center because of serious injuries. 20 minutes to be seen by EMS must have looked like an eternity to them. Over the years, the Harlow Volunteer Fire Department has managed to expand from one station to two substations, strategically covering all of Township Five. This has not happened with EMS. The opposite can be said. 20 minutes initial response time is not acceptable. Couple that with time on the scene triaging, assessing and stabilizing a patient for transportation, and then driving the 40 to 45 minutes to the nearest hospital, and we are outside the golden hour."
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Joyce Hawker?
Thank you so much. My name is Joyce Hawker. I live at 102 Tiger Woods. That's in the Caroline Pines area. I am here also to speak directly to the Board, EMS. I want to share a personal experience with you all. About two years ago, at my church in North Harlow, Pine Grove AM Design Church, we lost a church member. 911 was called. It took them 31 minutes to get there. It took them thirty-one minutes to get there. I minister CPR on her until they arrive. My pastor came to me and asked me, "How's she doing?" I said, "Where is EMS? If they're not here shortly, we're gonna lose her." Well, we lost her. When they finally got there, the young man said to me, "How long you been doing CPR?" I said, "Too long." I said, "Where were you?" He said, in a quote, "We got turned around. We didn't know exactly where we was going." So unacceptable. And I say to the boy, "What would you done if your mother was sitting in church in the sanctuary and died?" I would never, ever forget that experience. I worked in the health field for thirty-three years and retired in two thousand and twelve. Out of all my years of working in the health field, Chicago, the Midwest, flight nurse I was, and to experience something like this at church because the EMS took thirty-one minutes, and they said to me, "We got turned around." The observation here in front of me, Township 5, the response time is significantly higher than any other county, almost double. Residents at a greater, higher medical service risk. Residents are not being treated equally as it related to a medical, medical service that floors me. They always told me, "When you know better, you should do better." And we need to do better for our taxpayers, all these people that stood up here before you. They are pleading, "Don't let this happen. Don't let this happen." Thank you all so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lydia Brown?
Lydia Brown, two-two-five Sneed Road, Carolina Pines. I go to church at Pine Grove, and as you can see, I'm not so young. I'm seventy-seven years old. My health is not always the best. Please, we need service down in Harlow. We, the people, my friends, myself, if it's any way possible, under any rock, find some way to get us the EMS service down there. Thank you very much.
Ms. Lydia, thank you, ma'am.
Rufus Carter?
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Rufus Carter, seven-twenty-five Temple's Point Row. I stand before you to agree with some of the things that have been said about the EMS services that we need in the Harlow area. To know about the Harlow area, you must live there and see what it's like for the distance from Havelock to get there for the response. I can agree with the two ladies that stood up here and talked about the young lady that died. She was my aunt. I was there. I also did CPR as well, but was I doing it right? All I know was, I was trying to bring her back. It took EMS too long to get there. Thirty-one minutes is too long for a life. Oxygen leave the brain, five minutes, you're dead. I've seen a lot of things. I've been around a lot, but I'm begging and I'm pleading to the Board, take in consideration. Look above yourselves and see what we can do about this. We need an EMS in Harlow. It's too far for us to sit there and wait on EMS to come, because at seventy-seven, one-year-old, death knows nobody. It's not a color or race thing. We all are people, and what runs through our vein is the same color, is red. And once it's gone, we are gone. I ask you, take in consideration and think about what we are saying tonight. I won't take any more of your time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Maybell B.
Ms. Maple?
Maple.
My name is Collette Maple. I live at nineteen-eighty-eight Jack Rabbit Lane, New Bern, North Carolina. My subject is air quality in regards to the open pit sand mine on the Haynes Farm. Mr. Provost is currently leasing five acres of the Haynes Farm for a proposed open pit sand mine. This mine will be right next to the River Trace High Density Residential Area, which is mostly comprised of elderly residents and families with young children. It's not uncommon to see seven to ten children playing on ferret run, the road closest to the mining area. These children, along with other neighborhood children and residents, will be subjected to continuous air pollution from the heavy equipment and ten-wheel dump trucks digging and moving sand for up to ten years. This is an issue that is not addressed by the North Carolina Department of Mineral Resources, yet has the potential to cause an increased respiratory problems in our most vulnerable citizens from sand particles and silica in the air. There is serious concern that this will lead to compromised immune systems, worsening health problems for people with COPD issues, and will be detrimental to children and adults suffering from asthma. Although you do not have any power to do anything about this issue, you need to be aware of the impact on the most at-risk population and the surrounding developments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Christopher Maple?
Good evening.
I'm the other half. As you know, last meeting, we talked a lot about Bryces Creek and the sand mine on the Haynes Farm, so we don't need to reiterate those points. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Sampson for reflecting on your experience with the single-lane road where the children couldn't get on that bus because contractors tore up the road and would not fix it. Crump Farm Road is very much like this road, and it has serious problems now. I would call it dodgy at best. Once you start running those ten-wheelers on there, that road is gonna disintegrate very quickly. You've got a lot of people, hundreds of people, living back in that area, and it's one way in and one way out. And I would be interested to know what kind of plan the Highway Administration has to take care of that problem if it does occur. In addition to that, I'd like to clarify a couple of points from our last meeting. Mr. Haynes mentioned it was a five-year project. Well, I hate to say this, but the permit, which is now in the public domain and awaiting a hearing in December, clearly states it's fifteen years. And I suspect they will ask for an extension of that, because they plan on doing a lot more than five acres, according to Mr. Provost. For the general public, the term that's continually used is filter. This is not filter. This is sand, and that is high-grade sand on the Haynes Farm. Requires very little processing. It doesn't have to go over the bridge and then be cooked and sorted. This is very valuable. It's like gold and silver is to Nevada. This is a very important resource to Craven County, and everybody's in the business of trying to secure sand wherever they can find it. And that's why your interest in looking at long-term zoning for Craven County is very important, because there are a lot of other people out there trying to secure land and put them right next to developments or in developments. And that's something that really needs to be looked at seriously. In closing, if anyone is interested in following in the progress of the situation, we have a community active Facebook page under the name Stop Bryces Creek Open Pit Sand Mine. In addition to that, it has all the information you need. It has videos on Crump Farm Road and the damage to the road, and it's updated two to three times a week. We will also be having the hearing probably around the first week of December. I guess we're gonna, we're looking at this room, I don't know. There might be a lot of people. We may have to find another venue for it. And at that point, we'll have a better idea of what will happen. I suspect that that may end up going through, but it was really appreciated that you were looking at zoning, that you may help some other communities, even though you may not be able to help ours. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
James Williams?
James Williams, I live at one-on-five Maple Farms Lane in Havelock, North Carolina, and I'm here in support of the EMS in Harlow. I have a few stats. American Heart Association says brain death and permanent death start within four to six minutes of cardiac arrest, and also survival is reduced between seven and ten percent between every minute that a person is without breathing and actually in cardiac arrest without defibrillate ACLS care, okay? And very few people actually survive after ten minutes of cardiac arrest. So, obviously, when we talk about eighteen-minute times to be able to get the EMS ALS providers out there from Havelock into Harlow, that's pretty considerable. Unfortunately, you're most likely gonna be dead. I'm also a healthcare provider, been one for twenty-two years, and EMT and a first responder, and on my block, I feel the weight, because I have a fourteen-year-old daughter, an eight-year-old daughter, and a three-year-old daughter, and they mean the world to me. And my seventy-two, my seventy-two-year-old mother that lives with me, if something happened to them, the whole weight's on me, because I know it's me and maybe a few neighbors keeping them alive until we get EMS out there. That can be definitely over ten minutes, and my whole block knows who I am, and they come and get me when something happens. So, I have a huge weight on my shoulders, and I think that weight needs to be lifted. So, I ask you humbly, gentlemen, consider to have a permitted EMS unit out there in Havelock. Thank you. Or, excuse me, Harlow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that's all the speakers for this evening.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. Normally, I don't respond to questions or the comments that's put out there, but I think it's important. We've got enough people here to get the word back out. This has been on this Board's mind for the last five years that I've been on this Board. Like I said, somebody made the comment that Mr. McCabe, Commissioner Jones, and myself, we did form a committee based on the push of Commissioner McCabe to get that going. We did push it through. The Board didn't see, passed Board, didn't see fit, put it through for last year's budget, because Mr. McCabe has been fighting this issue ever since, again, since I've been on this Board. I'm glad somebody realized and made the distinction that fire taxes are completely different than EMS taxes. Fire taxes are run completely separate. But I think, and I'm not gonna insult anybody, please, I don't, I don't, I don't mean it this way, but all of our EMSs in this county are volunteer. They're self-sufficient, self-sustaining volunteer units who pay, if they have any paid employees, they pay for it out of their own markings. Now, does this county provide into it? Yes. Smaller ones get three-hundred-thousand dollars a year from the county. The larger ones only get two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in addition to what they get from their runs, their insurance, and what they're charging. Every EMS unit here, like I say, is self-sufficient, meaning they're self-governed. They're self-governed and have their own Board. They own their own equipment. They own their own building and pay for it. Those buildings don't belong to the county. They operate under the county's licensing for EMS. We understand, this Board understands, the necessity of Harlow growing. Since I've been on this Board, I know of three subdivisions that's gone in there and moved in there and has grown. So, you do have a concern, and you have the population growth going. This Board, in July, approved thirty-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars for a study for all of the EMS, because it's gotta be for the whole system of EMSs. It can't be for Harlow, because what impacts Harlow is gonna impact Cove City, Dover, and the rest of the county. So, we're doing a whole, complete study. Take a look around the room, the age of our volunteers are going up, and that's no reflection. They have served a purpose, and they've served it well and have done well, but we've gotta look at the whole, whole issue. That study was awarded last October, September, October, the study for the EMS, which is not due back to us until the end of March. If that hasn't been put out, then I'm, I'm sorry on that, but it has been, this Board put it in the budget for a thirty-two-thousand-dollar study for the whole county for EMSs, because we gotta look at what's the impact's gonna be on everyone. We realize what it is. Nobody wants to be, and it shouldn't be the cost associated with it, but everybody pays. The whole county pays. It's not one area pays. It's the whole area pays for it, because we gotta look at the whole picture of what we're going to do. Now, there's some other issues. If you wanna spend some time after I come out of the closed session, I'll be more than glad to sit down with you, some of the thoughts and everything, and what we're looking at and going on. But the gentleman down here on the right has been pushing this ever since I've been on the Board. This Board has fought him. Gotta remember, it takes four of us to prove anything, and it's just coming to the point, I'm not saying it hasn't been bad, it's coming to the point now, we have to do something because of the size of the area and the response times. But you also gotta remember, what you ask for may not be the solution you want, because one ambulance down there will still be called out, will not be your ambulance. That ambulance could be called to go up to Bryces Creek if the two ambulances in Havelock are dispatched and gone somewheres else. So, that, it's gonna be there, but it's not necessarily there the whole time. If something happens, that ambulance could be gone when we actually need it. So, we understand your concern. Believe me, we do. We're just trying to figure out what's gonna be the best way to do it and look at it. All right. Moving on. County Attorney?
No report, Mr. Chair.
No report. County Manager?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. Quick updates for you tonight. Tomorrow is Election Day for municipal elections. I believe school is canceled for tomorrow, so we can have votes, voting day? I believe they do. Yes, sir. And I believe there's municipal election, I believe Havelock, Dover, some of our smaller municipalities, everyone except New Bern, I believe, is up tomorrow. As the gentleman spoke earlier, Mr. Maple, I believe, there is going to be a public hearing dealing with the Bryces Creek Sand Mine. Commissioner Booker and myself have been working with the State Mining Department on ensuring that a public hearing happened here in New Bern. That was approved late last week. Right now, I know they're gonna publicize and send a letter out, I believe it is December tenth at seven PM in courtroom number four, which is across the street. It's the downstairs courtroom, right when you come through the metal detectors. And the reason there is, just as he said, it's a large enough facility to host plenty of people that wanna speak. That public hearing, just for the Board's reminder, is a state public hearing. It'll be handled by their, their own mediators and folks who'll come down and deal with that. I wanna thank the Citizen Academy members who've hung with us tonight again. What a great experience, Commissioners. It wasn't, doesn't seem like that long ago, we were up here talking about getting this thing started. As I mentioned to you, this would be a pilot program. We weren't really sure how it'd work out, but I think in the end, the results were great, and we hope to, as Chairman Liner said, hopefully include something in the budget next year to continue this program moving forward if the Board sees fit. I wanna thank Gwen Bryan publicly for her hard work on this program. Gwen, thank you. Who would've thought it took ten years to get there? But we did. I wanna thank Gene and Amber and Craig and Nan for helping and tagging along and making sure everything's there, and all our department heads who made themselves available to this academy and made themselves available to all the citizens who have a question or issue any day of the week. And lastly, I just report the Board, we've had our first two joint meetings with the Board of Education. These are small group meetings that we do every year, talk about long-range planning, talk about capital needs. We have one more meeting, I believe Commissioner- We have one more meeting, I believe Commissioner McCabe, Vice Chairman Mark, and Commissioner Mitchell will attend. They've been going very well so far, a lot of progress. And hopefully, when they're all done, we'll update the public on what's, what's moving forward. Mr. Chairman, unless you have things for me, that's my report, sir. Huh? Oh, thank you, Ms. Chair. I do want to report. Nan, if you'll stand up for a second wave, let's see if Bob can get her on camera. She never gets on camera, because she's over in the corner there. See, we'll make Bob work tonight. There you go, Bob. Nan, I am so pleased, and thank you, Chairman Liner, I can't believe I forgot the most important thing. Nan, last, two weeks ago, graduated from clerk school. She's now an officially certified North Carolina clerk in North Carolina. We're really proud of her. She learned a lot, and she's doing a great job as our county clerk. So, I'll move that forward.
Anybody have anything for the manager? Okay, Commissioner's report. Commissioner McCabe, start with you.
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Sampson.
I'd just like to say I'm thankful for being here tonight, thanking that we have qualified citizens. I'd like to say we all have problems in our communities. But working together, we can get these problems solved. It's not going to happen overnight. I've been up here, now I say 22 years, and I still got a problem haven't been fixed yet. But working together, we can get it done a lot quicker. But we're going to have to work together to get these things done. Because once we start fighting one another, we're not going to get anything done. I've been up here, and I know what a hard fight it is to try to get something done, both the city and the county. But I just have to encourage you to just keep right on praying and keep right on fighting. Because to let people forget, some of them are going to forget. And I'm just glad to be here tonight, and glad the Lord has smiled on me that I can still get around, still talk. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I want to thank all of the Township 5 residents that came out to support the EMS. And we're going to work together. Just take your time. Okay? Just hold on. Thank you.
Ms. Booger.
Yeah, just one thing. Last night, I was privileged to attend a function that was pretty remarkable. It was called, what was it called, Gary? Mercy on Middle. Thank you. Yeah, I just had a, Mercy Clinic is a clinic here in New Bern that really provides a great service to those folks who can't afford health care. And last night, 750 people lined up at tables on Middle Street, all the way from Broad Street, all the way down Middle Street, almost to the end of Front Street. And I think it was five or six restaurants each contributed one course. It was really an awesome evening, and music, and the tickets were the total take, and I don't know what expenses there were, I'm not involved in it, but over $50,000 was raised for the clinic last night. So, it was a very, very big success. So, anyway, that's the third time that this has been done. I think it started out with 500, and then, then last night it was 750.
Last two.
Okay, last two. So, I don't think it can get much bigger. I think that's probably about as big as it can get. But first, first Sunday in November, mark your calendars, and next year, by the way, the tickets went on sale and sold out in one day. So, this is a great event and a great community gathering. So, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
I don't have anything tonight, Ms. Chairman.
Vice Chair?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, just a reminder, the veterans, there's a veteran luncheon that will be held next Monday, the 11th, at 11:30 at the big church over by the Y.
Temple.
Temple. Temple Baptist on that, because the armory is still damaged from the hurricane. We're not doing it in there. So, any veterans are more than, feel free to come out. It's all free. And I'd like to see everybody out there. Based on that, we're going to go into closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143, 318A3, attorney-client privilege.
I make a motion, go into closed session.
Motion in a second. We will not, we'll be taking action when we come out. Just to hear a discussion going on in there. And like I offered earlier, if anybody wants to stick around, it's only take us about 10 minutes in there. And want to talk, I'll be here. Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Going into closed session.